would start this, end this summer or fall and finish up next year on building number one. And as you see in the site plan, that really shows all four sites. So I'm gonna go to the plan amendment and I'm gonna point out probably the key things that look different here than what you've seen on different plan amendments before. We lay out the project, obviously, it's the four 90-year apartment buildings. And then again, this is done in phases. And the key really here is, we have four phases of this project. Each one is substantially the same building, but they will all be ultimately combined into one apartment complex. The key from the phasing perspective is, there's a couple of things from the phasing perspective. One is, we have this plan amendment. This would be the public hearing before the city council on the plan amendment. Any change, as long as it falls within line here, which means it's substantially the same building, looks like that site plan, everything looks the same, wouldn't have to come before a public hearing of this body. It would be a minor modification to this plan because, again, this plan shows what all four phases would look like. Now, each redevelopment, that does not change that each redevelopment agreement itself, or the actual TIP would have to come and be approved for the project. So just, and the key there, so that's kind of the point one about the phasing of the project. And point two is, because this is a large-scale project for the apartment complex, but some of, but will be built in successive phases, but not all of those costs can really be segregated out, you know, so you have to do your demo all up front, you have to do some of those work up front, which makes sense from a cost perspective. So we look at this as one entire project. Ultimately, all costs that are TIP eligible will have to be, you know, certified as with any project, but it's, by approving this all as one plan, it alleviates the inefficiencies that would exist from doing, for example, demo on phase one, demo on phase two, three, four, you get it all done up front, it's all eligible cost. Doesn't change what is eligible, it doesn't change how you certify, anything like that, but just helps with the timing of the project and efficiencies. For phase one, for this phase one, the eligible, the TIP eligible costs that we've identified, the site acquisition, $138,800, some of the architect engineering fees, the demo, and the demolition, that's the $250,000 for phase one. As I mentioned, it'll start August 2019, anticipated, and finish up next year. Now, the other thing that's a key in this, and it's in the redevelopment plan amendment, it's stated, but also when we get to the agreement as well, is that, as has been discussed, since this is really, at least initially directed at student housing, adjacent to Concordia, utilizing tax increment financing, which is the 15-year clock, what's, what's been agreed to here, or if it's approved, is that it's an additional 15-year restriction on sales. So it's a 30-year restriction on being, being able to be sold to a tax-exempt entity. So the idea is just ensuring that after that 15-year TIP clock is up, that there's at least another 15 years, and as my understanding, there's no plans to sell it to Concordia or anything like that anyway. However, it's ensured that there's at least another 15 years that it's on the tax roll. So just kind of doubling that time period, which is different than we've, than you've seen in any other project. You know, looking at the cost-benefit analysis, I'm trying to make sure I don't want to go too fast and spin everything, but, but again, those are really the, the key points that are different than what we've seen before. From a, from a zoning perspective, when we look at, when we look at that, this project, and it'll go through all the, all the normal processes from the, the building zoning perspective, but that it requires a PUD, a plan unit development, and that again is part of the phasing. And the idea is that ultimately, after all four phases, it will be effectively from the outside, two buildings. The PUD allows that, that reduction of the setback in between the two, like phase one, phase two will essentially be connected, and so it'll look like one building. So that's the purpose of the PUD, that I will have to go through the approval process. Again, it really does affect phase one, but will come into play on phase two and on our own. Cost-benefit analysis for this project, again, base value here, $78,800. Projected completed value based on the assessor's estimate is $1,097,985. So we have a tat, an incremental value of just over a million dollars, $1,019,122, for a tax increment annually of $17,311. That is what will, that, that $17,000 worth of 15 years generates the $250,000 in TIP indebtedness. The project, overall project costs on phase one are over $1.8 million for construction of the project, and out of that, again, those eligible costs would be $250,000. This project will be creating new housing. It'll be multifamily housing, again, directed at students, but, but again, not only will this add effectively, you know, it's adding 36 bedrooms, 36, you know, bedrooms to the community that are really directed towards the students. The Concordia University sees that need for additional housing, that additional housing that therefore would be needed in the community. So you're supporting a key institution here with Concordia. You're also freeing up additional housing that would be needed otherwise throughout the community because if there is, if those students are coming, they're gonna need homes. So we see that really as a positive benefit for the overall community. And, and again, and again, in the cost-benefit analysis, we just mentioned the restrictive covenant, that additional 15-year restrictive covenant, to really just add an additional layer of protection on this project. The redevelopment agreement, then, so again, that plan amendment covers all four phases. Each subsequent phase, assuming, as long as it meets that, you know, substantially the same, it's gonna look like a ninth-plex building exactly the same, it would just be a minor modification, it would go before the CRA for approval. However, then, to the redevelopment agreement, this is just for phase one. Each one of those, this, this doesn't guarantee phase two, three, or four. It only, this only comes to phase one, and the redevelopment will have to come back before this board, before being approved for any TIP on phase two, three, and four. So looking at the redevelopment agreement itself, we acknowledge what I just said there in recital J, but then the effective date would be January 1, 2020. We anticipate a partial valuation in 2020 because it'll be partially built out this year. The minimum valuation not to protest is $1,997,985, to give us about $250,000 in TIP. That's the amount that's issued under section 3.02. Again, this form looks very familiar to what we've seen in other projects. Till we get to section 4.06, that's where we have our 30-year restrictive covenant in there. So it's first in 4.06, it's in here twice, but first, so there, that's where there's a restrictive covenant that redevelopment cannot sell to a tax-exempt entity for that 30-year period. Again, that same covenant appears in section 6.03 of this agreement. I guess it was good enough to put in there twice, but same thing. Let's see. Otherwise, exhibit C, let's go to, and again, that's our sources and uses. So as I mentioned, this $250,000 in tax increment financing indebtedness is really gonna be covered, covering the site acquisition, engineering, architectural fees, and demolition. That's the $250,000 that's estimated out. Because the questions came up before, in the previous meetings, and again, as a refresher, this was recommended to approve by the CRA, and then recommended for, for, the plan amendment was recommended for approval by the planning Whatever costs come up in phase two, so if, if redevelopment comes and asks for TIP for phase two, they'll have to prove, certify the eligible costs the same as they would in any other, in any other situation. There's no way they, there's no double dipping, there's no calling demolition from site one, also on site two. It has to be new, additional costs. There's, it, it, it sounds like there's plenty of eligible costs, but they would have to be new, and it would, really, doesn't change anything except the timing. And I think with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you guys have on this project. I flew through it, so let me know what questions you have.
And Andrew, just so they can hear it from you, I know we discussed it at CRA, the additional 15 years or the 30 years not being able to sell to a nonprofit follows the property. So if Thomas chooses to sell it to somebody else, that stays with the property, you cannot sell it to Concordia.
That's correct. So yeah, that's right. So redevelopment has the ability to sell the property to a third party, as long as they are not a tax-exempt organization. But upon that sale, this does run with the property, so their restriction is in place for 30 years, no matter who the owner is.
This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing portion.
Good evening, Council. Thomas Kaden, 1119 Augusta Drive. So again, I'm Thomas Kaden, I'm managing member of Plexons LLC, the developer behind the TIP, TIP application. Again, we are a locally owned real estate rental company here in Seward, and as Andrew stated, we are proposing to build a steel-staff apartment building with assistance of TIP. So again, to echo Andrew, this is a four-phased approach, starting on the southeast corner, as you can see on that first page of the packet there, would currently be 8 Lincoln Street. That's currently a two-unit apartment. And then the second phase will be added on right next to the first phase, making it look like one apartment. And you can see that in the rendering on the last page there. And then phase three and four will follow suit on the west side of the property, as you can all see in the rendering. And so, just to kind of touch on this, as Andrew also said, was each building will be three stories and approximately 13,500 square foot. They will all be fully furnished with full kitchens, which will make it ideal for college students. And then the building will also, as you can see on the renderings, feature a stone veneer, which I know when we were talking about this a few months ago, I know that was, that was something a lot of you guys stated that you really wanted on the apartment, was to kind of fit in with the neighborhood, and so we did put some nice stone veneer on there. Then obviously, everything will be, we'll have central heat vac within the apartments, temperature-controlled common areas. And so ideally, with the, the location of the apartments, it is, of course, intended for the use of Concordia, University of undergraduates, graduate assistants, assistant coach, and assistant coaches due to the proximity. And then the apartments are designed to be a natural stepping stone for students transitioning away from the dormitories, dormitories while maintaining the easy access to classes and activities. And so the way it's set up is that us Plexons will charge a monthly flat, flat rate for each furnished apartment, similar to on-campus housing, which of course removes the hassle of separate bills for rent, utilities, garbage, and internet access. And of course, just referencing the county-wide housing study conducted in 2013, you know, it's stated that the city needed to add 96 rental units by 2018 in order to keep up with Seward's growing population. And since the release of that study, there have not been any new apartments added or multifamily residents added. So I guess in conclusion, with the addition of more housing options, it will be advantageous to the city of Seward, because it will, by providing these attractive new apartments for Concordia students and supporting the vibrant, vibrant rental market in a growing community. And so in order for the project to be economically viable, however, a partnership with the city is necessary in the form of tax increment financing. This project is a great example of, of an opportunity for the community, university, and local residents to benefit from an investment in our shared future together. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Yeah.
So being with structure, you're gonna have sprinklers and fire suppression, right?
Yeah, yeah, we have to, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for Thomas? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Jonathan Jenk with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership, 616 Bradford. Would like to speak in favor of this project. Want to hit just a couple of points, couple of reiterate points, but maybe one or two new ones. I really do think this project is specifically important because it helps to start to address the multifamily housing needs that we have in our community. As Thomas stated, we have not had a multifamily dwelling built since the year 2000. We've, we've built a number of duplexes or triflexes, but we have not really been able to, to build apartments. And so I think this is an important step in that direction. I will add along with that, as, as Andrew articulated, I really do see this project as something that opens up other housing in the community to help support our workforce growth. We obviously have a lot of students that live in the, in the community now. The hope is that as those students would be given this really great viable student housing option, it would open up some areas for families to grow into our community. And I would, I would say that specifically to support our, our local employer growth, as well as a school project, which of course we'll talk about later this evening. I do want to highlight, Thomas is a local developer. I think that is something we should be excited about, and something that we should support, especially when we think about strategically growing this community. I'm excited that we have a local son of the community, who is a business owner here, who is getting married this summer, and we, I'm excited to, to work with Thomas on this project. I also noted, and all of you understand that this is R4 zoning, it is zoned for this sort of project. I think that's an important note. And obviously, with the existing properties that are in place, we have some issues with those, those buildings. And so I think this is a, a nice use, a nice redevelopment use for that area. And with all of that said, I would ask for your consideration and support for this TIP project. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Right, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Anything else from council? Or Andrew, or you want? Nah, everybody can introduce theirs.
Andrew, so for the base on this, that's $78,000, came from the developer. Is that normally what we're gonna do on this, or is this kind of a, it's any way a circumstance, since it's a combination of lots?
Well, really, yeah. So we have the, what we have is the assessed value on each of the lots, and then because of the replat that's going to be occurring, it's really just taken, I mean, it's an estimate based on, okay, here's, I mean, value divided by the amount of the lot. And that's, and that's usually what we do in a situation like that where there's a replat.
So the only other thing that jumped out to me was on, basically setting the interest rate on this TIP at zero, when we've seen other ones actually add a percentage rate.
Yeah.
Where does that come from, or how does that differ?
You can do it either way. And I guess the, the simplest breakdown is, when there's a, you know, a redevelopment can hold the, hold the note themselves, they can get a lender to lend on that note and hold that note, they can hold the note and collateral assign it. When the redevelopment is holding it themselves, I mean, they can use a 0% interest rate, it's because there's no bank involved. And if they're gonna lend to a bank, if a bank's gonna lend on that, obviously there's going to be an interest rate. Ultimately, whichever way we do that, there's gonna be, based on our projection, $17,000 in tax increment each year for 15 years. So if they, if, if the note has a 0%, then it's a, in this case, it's $250,000. If we put 5% on that, it would be, I don't know, $180,000. But it's, you know, from a, so that, from the tax increment perspective, it's, the debt service is the same amount, it's the $17,000 no matter what. So that was just because of the way they're holding it as, as a redevelopment. So I guess I don't see that as a concern either way, because it, it ultimately is the same number of dollars. They're gonna have to certify $250,000 worth of TIP instead of 180, and...
Okay. Yeah, and that's, I assume that, but I just wanted to make sure on that. Thank you.
And we discussed that at CRA. Isn't that a direction that most of these TIPS are going now?
That's, and this, and this is pretty common, yeah. That's a good point. I mean, a lot of times, if the, if the redevelopment's holding it themselves, they'll just put a 0% on there, they're just bringing it in. And again, I guess, it, from my perspective, when I look at it from the city's perspective, it just doesn't, I mean, it really doesn't make a difference to me, because they, there's more than enough eligible costs here, and at 0%, you technically need to have more eligible costs than if you put the interest rate on there. The interest rate really only plays in if their lender needs to have that interest rate. So it's pretty common, even though it's the first time really here, it's pretty common across the state.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we are I D. Anyone wants to introduce the resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment and adopting the cost-benefit analysis?
I'll introduce the resolution. I'll second.
Oh, wait.
I don't know if there's a second on that.
Sorry.
We'll take it. All right, let's see. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2019-10. Would anyone like to, we've done that. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
That's there. Now you can second.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, please register your votes. Slight votes.
Welcome back. Coleman, Miller, Seale, Smith, working.
And I D is also a resolution approving the redevelopment agreement for redevelopment project, including the issuance of TIP indebtedness for the redevelopment project and other such actions under the community development law.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2019-11. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move. Second.
Moving seconded. Please register your votes. Slight votes.
Welcome back. Coleman, Miller, Seale, Smith, working.
See, Ellen, so bad to go through that? All right, on to number five, which is also a public hearing, consideration of tax increment financing, application of green future properties, and Andrew will bless us once again.
All right. Second project before you, Green Futures. This is the renovate, renovation, reconstruction of the Fury Building downtown. And so obviously, that was destroyed in a, you know, damaged in a fire, and so we're now, we have a redevelopment coming forward and is willing to do some substantial renovation, rehabilitation, and has made this request for TIP as part of that. In the application, really the keys here, so they, they brought forward, and the, and the TIP here will be used for facade, mainly facade enhancements and energy and, and energy efficiency enhancements. Again, both are eligible costs under the community development law. And the overall, as we look, when we talked about value, you know, in the application, the overall cost of this rehabilitation project is over $1.2 million. Redevelopment's putting in over $1.2 million in costs. Construction will all be done this year as anticipated, and the request is $103,000 of tax increment financing. Now, again, with our facade enhancements, our energy efficiency enhancements, what we're really looking at is the amount that exceeds minimum code. So, you know, you have to build a minimum code, and everything you do above that is a potentially eligible cost. Redevelopment's laid out a substantial, I mean, provide a lot of good information here. And so I really identified $575,000 of improvements over code. I went through those, and I did a very, you know, kind of did the conservative look, just to make sure everything is eligible and without, you know, easy look without having to stretch it all. And we're already talking about $200,000 of eligible costs shown there. The request is only $103,000, so we've, and that's, there's certainly more than that there, but clearly, clearly in those enhancements, there's more than enough costs. And again, so out of the $1.2 million that's being put into this project, $575,000 of that is, is exceeding code, and you know, the minimum code requirements. That really goes into the next piece, which is the valuation. So the assessor, again, the assessor's projection on this for the completed value of this project is $648,120. The base value right now is $46,658. So the question came up prior, you know, that's a high, there's some concern that's a high valuation. I always say the renovation and the rehabilitations are the hardest ones to value. It's, I don't know, other than if that's what the assessor's coming back with, that seems like a pretty good estimate. And when you look at the, the fact that it's a $1.2 million project, $575,000 of those costs are really exceeding code and enhancing that project, you know, creating a higher value than what existed prior, presumably. That $648 seems like probably where, where it'll end up, or at least it seems reasonable, based on the assessor's, you know, their preliminary look. So with that, that's a $600,000 incremental value that they're creating with this project, so about $10,347 of tax increment each year. And again, there, that would support the, excuse me, the $103,000. On this case, we have a bank loan involved, so again, we would see that, the interest rate counter to the one we just looked at. So the, the, the costs, again, when I broke them down, I really looked at, I, I, I put them into categories that, that were facade enhancements and energy efficiency enhancements, and some site preposition, site, you know, work ahead of time. And that, and again, there's about $200,000 easily identified. We can start looking deeper, but we don't have to, because they're only asking, the, the request is $100,000, $103,000 in TIP. So plenty of, plenty of uses, plenty of cost enhancements that should create that value. So looking at the plan amendment, again, for the redevelopment plan, and again, procedurally, this comes before you, I shouldn't mention this from the start every time. CRA has approved the plan amendment, redevelopment agreement, recommended approval of everything here, and the planning commission has recommended approval as well. So this, the state of this building was sustainably damaged from the fire, and it was fairly recent, was it the end of 2016? And so in order to get this building back to, back to use, but similar to what the uses were before, that it requires a substantial amount of, of costs we just talked about. Go to exhibit C of our redevelopment plan amendment. Again, when I looked at this project for the cost-benefit analysis, the plan amendment, I was really looking at this, when we look at, you know, population density, you know, increase in traffic flow, all those issues, I was looking at it at, prior to the fire and post-construction. So to me, we had a mixed-use building before, some commercial, some residential, some separate story, and that's what's being created now. So there's really, as I was looking at, there's really no substantial traffic increase, you know, population density increase, any, any of those increases, because prior to the fire, that's, you know, that, that was the substantial uses, at least from a broad picture. So when we look at those issues, they're really, it wasn't, you know, it is, in that sense, the same as it was before, just, just renovating and rehabilitating the project. Zoned properly, and mixed uses are allowed and encouraged in the CBD district downtown. And again, from cost-benefit analysis, moving through the numbers, we're gonna create a $605,000 tax incremental value based on that $648,000 valuation. And out of that, that will support the $103,000 in tax increment financing. The project, you know, it, from a cost-benefit analysis, we're giving, we're, you know, doing some, some, you know, work on renovating the building that was destroyed in the downtown, you know, working on rehabilitating that downtown, keeping that downtown vibrant. There will be some tenants, and the redevelopment can speak to those more than I can, but, but ultimately, we're gonna have some commercial uses on the main floor, and then residential on the, on the upper floor. And again, with that residential on the upper floor, I, I note in, in the cost-benefit analysis, that last year, the legislature passed a bill, a workforce housing bill, that specifically identified upper, upper-story housing as a, you know, highlighted that as a use of TIP. Now, this is not, this doesn't fall within that workforce housing bill, so this is not, you know, utilizing the new rules under LB496. However, I think it's useful to note that this is upper-story housing, it falls in line with at least the policies that are laid out, and so should be supported there as well. In the redevelopment agreement for this project, again, the effective date would be 2000, January 1, 2020, so the work would all be done this year in 2019, so we'd start our TIP clock in 2020. The minimum project valuation would be $648,120. Under section 302, creates the, the TIP indebtedness not to exceed $103,000. And this looks, this will look And this looks, this will look very similar to what we've seen before. This, because we're using facade, TIF for facade, we'll have a facade license on this building. Again, the same form that we've used in other projects with facade, TIF for facade, so that should look the same. And... I think that is the main pieces of this one. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have anything for Andrew?
So with this one, TIF eligible, yearly $10,286. We're looking at $103,000, so that's going to pay off earlier than...
Well, no, see, because this one, you have the interest rate, so that's the difference. And so if you look at, look at exhibit C in the redevelopment agreement, it's probably the easiest place.
144, you have.
Yeah, so the total TIF, I guess we don't have the total TIF, but it would be $150,000 roughly if you had a 0% interest, because it's $10,000 over 15 years. But there's, but since it'll be a lender volunteer, you have a 5.5% interest rate, so the total amount is $103,000. Now, again, that's still $10,200 in tax increment over that period. And again, as I said, there's, I put down $193,744 TIF eligible costs. There's more than that likely, I just went with the pretty easy ones to identify out. So there's plenty of costs there, but that's the difference, is there's the interest rate on this one where there wasn't on the previous one.
Andrew.
It is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing portion.
Good evening, city council members. I'll give you a brief rundown. I know some of you guys have heard this a couple times, so I don't want to go over it all again. But what we intend on doing with this building, as he stated before, I believe there were eight apartments up there. As our friend, Mr. Seaman, said last week, they weren't in very good condition, nor was the building itself. So our intent is to make them much better than they were. The new building will contain seven executive slash professional apartments on the upper floor. There are two floors, a main floor, well, there is a basement too, but the main floor's 5,000 square foot, the upper floor's 5,000 square foot. On the main floor, we intend to split that in half and have two 2,500 square foot spaces. State-of-the-art, we do have contracted a gourmet hot dog restaurant out of Lincoln that will be occupying one half of that. On the other side, it will be open for either office or retail space. As the building stands now, until we get through this process, it is without a roof and has been since the fire. It has been cleaned out and gutted down to the brick sidewalls and studs. So we're extremely excited about getting this process going and getting it started. And we acquired the property just before 4th of July last year and did our best to clean it up prior to the big celebration. And this year, we hope to have the entire exterior done and complete prior to the 4th of July, if everything goes as planned. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you guys may have.
As a member of the 4th of July committee, thank you, that'd be great.
Anybody else have anything?
Let me back up, my name is Josh Delk. My address is 2287 McKelby Road. Sorry.
So the only, the only thing that came up, Sid attended planning commission, I didn't attend planning commission.
I was there too.
You were there, so I don't know, from a planning commission standpoint, from CRA, I went to the CRAV. The only thing that came up during CRA was the potential of the drive-through. I don't know if you want to address that, Josh, and what happens there in that alley, and uses there, and while Andrew said there's not going to be any traffic changes, there's probably going to be some traffic changes. I hope for the sake of the gourmet hot dog place that there's a traffic change.
As, most of you guys are familiar with the downtown square and that area. Currently, there is, in between the Helminck Printing Building and the Fury Building, there is an open drive-through spot that exits into the public alley that goes behind all three buildings, including Cattle Bank. There are plans, but it's just that we have not submitted to planning and zoning or anybody to find out if it's even feasible to put a drive-through there. It has been discussed, it is not contingent on any of the contracts for the occupant there, but it has been a thought, and so we haven't really presented it one way or the other, just because in our minds, there's no need to get anybody worked up about drive-throughs or traffic jams or concerns until we even know whether city planning inspectors, architects, engineers, civil engineers are going to allow it at that point. Regardless, it is still an open public drive-through to get there, and right now, it's, it's not being used because until we get the roof on, the structural engineer says that he doesn't want people and vehicles in there. But once the building is complete, regardless, that will be open for parking and entering and exit, or at least entering traffic that will come out into the alley behind there.
And Josh has use of parking, is there enough space there to do diagonal? Or is it, it's always, I've always seen when vehicles are parked in there that they're parallel to the building.
There should be plenty of space, if it's a one-way direction, there should be plenty of space for diagonal parking. I want to say it is close to 25 foot across there, so there should be plenty of space for diagonal parking plus a drive alley. So we've considered many different options, especially for the restaurants' point of view. If there wasn't a drive-through, they would certainly like to do some sort of curbside delivery where a person could come up, text, and have their order brought out to them. And again, that's, to us, that's just part of attracting the right type of customers that we want downtown, which is restaurants and retail spots, because those things all attract people to our downtown.
What about parking for your residents?
Parking for the residents, we had talked about this before. It's really not going to change as, prior to the fire, there were eight apartments up there and multiple residents. And I hope I can say this in a politically correct way. It was somewhat of a low-income type of situation, so there were multiple people in multiple apartments up there. So I don't foresee the living space being any more crowded than it was prior to. But those people, as Greg discussed last week at CRA planning and planning and zoning, they have the option of obtaining permits for the downtown square area where in the evenings, up until morning, they're free to park overnight with the proper permit. And within, I think Jonathan touched on this too, within one or two blocks in multiple directions of that are sufficient public parking areas for them.
I had one of those permits when I lived downtown. So you just used it during night and then you had to move before 8 o'clock?
Yeah, I think it's like, yeah, 6 or 7 o'clock, you gotta be out there, and after 6 o'clock or 5 o'clock at night. So, I mean, it, I don't anticipate it being much, much more of an issue than it was prior to that fire. And, you know, we office in the building right next door, the Helminck Printing Building, and very rarely is it a problem, and it's much less of a problem now that a lot of the stuff that was at the courthouse has been moved to the judicial center and so forth.
Anything else for Josh?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello again, Jonathan Jenk with the Sioux County Chamber of Development Partnership. I'd like to also speak in favor of this project. I think this is an exciting addition to our historic downtown district, specifically as we've been working on our downtown revitalization efforts. I see this as a wonderful catalyst project for our downtown revitalization efforts. As you know, we have 13 total projects going on, and I really think this is a shining star for the downtown that we'll be proud of for years to come. I'm excited that it will diversify our commercial offerings in the downtown district with a new restaurant, a potential office space, or a retail space, and of course, the executive apartments, which we have all three of those identified needs within community surveys and studies that have been done recently within the community. Really, the fire was an unfortunate thing, but this project does a nice job of cleaning that up, and I think in really the best way possible that we could. So again, I think this is something to be proud of. The building has been sitting for about two and a half years. I think we're very fortunate, again, we have a local business owner that is stepping up to make this investment. And so I think the consideration to support a local business owner through this project, I think tax increment financing is a great, great program to build support Josh and his team to make this considerable investment in our historic downtown district. And for those reasons, I would ask for your support for this project. And Josh had referenced the parking, I've mentioned this at planning commission, CRA. Through our downtown revitalization plan, we did a parking supply and demand analysis. It sounds as riveting as you may think, we counted parking stalls. So through that process, we analyzed the square footage and use types of all of the buildings in the historic district. Based on that analysis and the existing public and private parking stalls, there is technically a surplus of parking stalls within the total historic district. Now, that doesn't mean there aren't pain points, of course, specifically around the courthouse square, but if you go about a block off, you're going to be able to find sufficient parking within the district. I think it is important to note, council, as the downtown district continues to grow, especially as we build out the second floor of the historic district, we have noted here, if we were to fill out, fill out all the future ground floor occupancy that we are going to have a gap of parking here over time. And so I think that's something maybe from a long-term perspective to consider. What are some of our options? Our downtown revitalization plan has some ideas on how we address that. But for this project at this time, that's not an issue in my opinion.
Any questions for Jonathan?
Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wish to comment? So none, I closed the public comment portion. Any other questions from the council for Andrew or anyone? Otherwise, I will, Carl, you're good? Okay, otherwise I'll introduce, or I'll entertain a resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment and adopting the cost benefit analysis. Somebody wants to introduce?
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2019-12. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move for approval? Second.
Moved and seconded. Please register your votes. Splay votes. Item B is a resolution approving the redevelopment agreement. Would anyone like to introduce that?
I'll introduce.
One of us.
One of them introduced it. Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2019-13. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move, second.
Moved and seconded. Please register your votes. Splay the votes. Item number five. Item number six is confirmation of Mayor Ickmeyer's appointments to various boards and commissions. You want us to do these separate, right, Kelly? So the first one, item A is appointing Mark Sor to the civic senate commission.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved and approved, or seconded, any discussion? Please register your votes, splay votes. Item B is reappointment of Andrea Bach to the Parks and Rec Board for a three-year term.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Please register your votes, splay the votes. And item C is reappointment of James Varney to the City Agent Services Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Please register your votes. Splay the votes.
Running favor, welcome back, Colman Miller, Seale Smith, motion.
That is item six. Item seven, consideration of tax increment financing, application of Project Superior. Andrew, you're back up.
Always a good meeting for the community when I'm up here three times, because there's a lot of good things happening. This Project Superior, obviously, has been, before this board recently, we've already approved the redevelopment plan amendment, so now only the redevelopment agreement itself is before you. This is going to implement what has already been approved through that redevelopment plan amendment, and then this will be the actual contract in place for the redevelopment project. This has been approved by the CRA as well. And so if we take a look through this, again, this should match up, except for a couple things we find, you know, it's fine-tuned in here with what you have seen recently with the plan amendment itself. So the effective date for this project, January 20th. And what we have in there, there's a couple, again, just a couple caveats. Because of really the scope of this project, the additional pieces, the site readiness MOU between the city and the redeveloper, again, this is anticipated January 2020, unless there's some delays, in which case we can push this back a little bit. That's how the agreement is set up. But as long as everything goes according to the plan, that it should be next year as the effective date. Again, with this project, you can recall, we have, we created a kind of range of minimum value. We have the minimum valuation for the not to protest at $15,171,660, so that's our minimum project valuation in here. And then we have a new defined term of the valuation protest threshold, $24 million. And again, that creates that range because of the size and scope of this project, just to make sure. So the redeveloper agrees not to protest below that $24 million value, and that's what creates, that value is what needed to create the $5.9 million in TIF. However, if it does come in at $15 million, we all acknowledge that that is a possibility and that then we'd be meeting all the requirements and expectations of the project. So again, we just have, this just kind of implements that range that was created based on the assessor's estimate and our best guesses. So section 3.02, again, this is, the TIF is not to exceed $5.9 million. The $5.9 million is based on that $24 million valuation. Section 3.02B, this is a provision, and again, probably unlikely to occur based on our valuation range. However, the idea here is, we've got a rail campus project, we know there's a lot more eligible uses out there, a lot more beneficial uses. So if there is additional TIF from this, that's generated by this project, you know, the CRA has the ability to capture that and utilize it for additional public improvements. It's not set right now, it's just left in there as a, as a potential that this project could expand in that rail campus area. Again, that would be beyond the $24 million valuation. I don't know how likely that is, probably not likely. But the main point is, the cap on the TIF for the redevelopers, $5.9 million, if there was additional TIF used for eligible uses, it would be really of the CRA's implementation to be determined at a later time in whatever year that comes up. And really, that would involve an amendment here, and you would see that before this board again. And we've got our uses, there, we, section 3.06, again, just references the site readiness MOU. That's a condition of all, you know, this work being done is that everybody complies with that, the terms of that as well. In section 4.05, again, here, this just highlights our range of values. Subsection B, redevelopers specifically acknowledged in this section. If we hit that minimum value, that $15 million value, this project only generates about $3.7 million in TIF. It's acknowledged, we have it built in for the higher $24 million valuation. But just clarifications, so everybody knows what's going on and there's no, and everybody's on the same page with that. So that's set up in section 4.05. Section 5.04, so in the plan amendment that was approved, there was some potential use of facade, eligible, some TIF for eligible facade work. there was some potential use of facade, eligible, some TIF for eligible facade work. As, after that approval of the plan amendment, we went back and, and got the terms of this agreement and sort of looking at those TIF uses, there's a substantial amount of cost, really in the engineering, the site prep, that were a lot higher than expected. So what the redevelopers said is, we might not use any floor facade. And we said, that's fine, that makes sense. And so what we did is just put in section 5.04, in the event that any, that they present eligible costs, any facade work, again, it'd have to be above and beyond code, the same as everything else, that they will, they will put on that facade license, the same as we have done in every other project. If they don't use it, if they don't, you know, use TIF for any facade work, then they don't need to put the license in place. Seemed fair and reasonable and the right way to handle it. Again, exhibit A lays out the description of the project, which you've seen in the plan amendment. It's a 105,000 square foot industrial building, pet food, food processing facility. There's some office space in there. It's going to be a really nice kickoff to the rail campus area. Exhibit B lays out our TIF indebtedness calculations. Again, very similar to everything we've seen before, other than we have our range in here. So we look at both, both the potential valuations based on 15 million and 24 million. At 15 million, again, we created about 250,000 dollars of tax increment and, and which will really generate 3.7 million dollars in TIF. At that 24 million dollar valuation, it's roughly 400,000 dollars in tax increment, and that will get to the 5.9 million. And again, this project, similar to the Plex Homes, is, the TIF is going to be set at 0%. And again, redevelopers holding this, they're funding all this through, you know, self-funding and financing through their own equity, and, and so that's why that's at 0%. Sources and uses in exhibit C, numbers all match up, we just talked about. Again, just note that as we hone, and the TIF uses, we honed in on some of these numbers from the plan amendments, and really, the, the mass grading was the one that went up substantially. So that number's a lot higher, and that's why, that's why redevelopers doesn't think there'll be any facade uses or anything like that, it's just that mass grading's coming in a lot higher and a couple of the other costs. But, but again, all of those are, are eligible costs. And ultimately, even if those numbers change a little bit, as with any project, they'll have to certify ultimately what they actually spend. So these are all just estimates until they come in with their certification of what the actual costs were. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have anything for Andrew? Jonathan and Amy made the trip, do you have anything you want to say?
I don't think so, unless there's a question.
If nobody has anything, this is also a resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number.